Make a motion on everything we do.
Good evening and welcome to the December 16th meeting of the Mount Vernon Board of School Trustees. If you would, please stand with me and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. It is seven o'clock and we'll call this meeting to order. First up, we have the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Parker, do we have any changes or additions?
Yes, please. We're requesting we added a donation last Friday that's been added to the consent as well as the personnel report's been updated.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Do I have a motion on this evening's agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Phil. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Kelly. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Next up, we have public comments. Dr. Parker, anyone sign in?
Nope.
No one has signed in for public comments, so we will move on to reports. Dr. Parker?
Thank you so much. We'll start off with our good news report and I believe our amazing Director of Community Relations is going to get a little help. So Maria?
I am. Each year, I have the pleasure of kind of mentoring a senior at Mount Vernon High School. It's through the ICE program, which is the, basically the work-study program. And so this year's student intern is Tinley Benz and she's going to give the good news report tonight. And so I'm going to introduce Tinley.
Hi, thanks for having me. I love working with Maria and I've learned so much so far through this internship. With that being said, let me read to you about the great news in our district. Congratulations to Dr. Parker for being selected as the 2024 recipient of the Cadence Dodson EdTech Trailblazer Award through Indiana Chapter of COSN, which is the Consortium for School Networking. Dr. Parker, in collaboration with Ratio Design, presented at the National EdSpaces Conference, highlighting how learning spaces can be designed to support and enhance innovative learning practices. All MVHS students enrolled in the Criminal Justice Program recently received their law enforcement, academic jail officer certification, and three second-year students achieved their International Academies of Emergency Dispatch certifications. FES created a delicious gingerbread replica of the town of Fortville using their STEAM skills, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. Local business owners shared details about their companies with students, who then completed a report their assigned business. The students also created graham cracker and icing models of the businesses, which were assembled to replicate the town of Fortville. MVCS hosted the annual holiday open house with near-record attendance. Visitors had a chance to win a door prize and enjoy a tasty treat with staff and retirees. We would like to thank our wonderful vendors who donated prizes and supported our staff. MVMS eighth-grade students completed the Walk on Water project. This hands-on initiative combined creativity, teamwork, and problem-solving skills as students designed and built devices to help one team member try to walk with a device across a pool. Congratulations to the select seventh, eighth, and ninth-grade band students who represented MV and participated in the Indiana Band Masters Association All-Region Honor Band at Newcastle High School. Congratulations also to MVHS Senior Andrew Bolt for being recognized as a student athlete with exceptional servant hood efforts. Now on to community connections. The MES Choir and MVMS Band participated and filled the Coorsville Tree Lighting Ceremony with festive holiday music. The MCE Student Council is currently partnering with PTO and collecting items and making essential toiletry kits for families in need at the Ronald McDonald House. The NJHS eighth-grade students at MVMS organized a school-wide food drive to support the Fortville community. As incentive, the top donating class were rewarded with a donut party, demonstrating remarkable generosity. MVMS students contributed over 37 boxes of canned foods to the Fortville area. Resource Mission, which is farm. Additionally, MVCS ambassadors conducted their own food drive to further supporting the farm with additional food donations. Dr. Parker hosted a traveling talk session at McCordville Coffee at the Crossing, providing community members with the opportunity to enjoy breakfast while engaging in meaningful conversations. Now in your board packet, there's more good news information and media to check out below. Thank you.
Outstanding. Is Dr. Edwards or Mrs. Lockwood going next? Okay, you made me nervous when I saw you walking up there, Mrs. Lockwood. Yeah, I appreciate that. Good job. I would like to introduce the esteemed Principal of Fortville Elementary, Dr. Vince Edwards, and he has a report for everybody tonight.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having us here. We have a lot of things happening in our school, but one thing that's new this year that we decided we would share a little bit is our robotics team. This is our first-ever robotics, competitive robotics team. We're thankful that we were able to get that put together this year and that is led by Stephanie Thorla, who is our STEM teacher and does a great job with all of that and is also working with our robotics team. I'm going to hand it over to her and some of our first-ever team members to share some more about our program.
Hello. Like he said, this is the first time ever that Fortville is having a competitive team this year. We were very lucky to get an awesome grant written by Dr. Shipley and it's been a learning experience for me. This is my second year teaching STEM. I had robotics club last year, but we don't build quite intricate robots like for competition. So it's a learning experience for me and as well for the kids this year. But like the slide says, it fosters lots of critical thinking, problem-solving skills. We have two teams, so they work together. They're learning quickly that each of the steps that we go through to make the robot their own, they're learning about the robot, they're learning about how to collaborate with each other. We also have fun and we're silly and our practices are two hours long on Friday afternoon. So they are done probably by the end of school, but we come together and we've built awesome robots so far. I... How do I scroll? Okay. Oh, got it. Okay, so the VEX IQ is what we're participating in. We, as STEM in the elementary, we teach VEX IQ. So the kits that we've had in our elementary schools have fostered some of the skills that maybe the middle school has now. So what is VEX IQ? It's a program just specifically for, a robotics program for students. And each year, they come out with some kind of game or competition that teams come together and they compete against each other usually. This year, it's a little bit different. The rapid relay game is with two teams and you're working together to score points. But the other team is not our other team, it's another team from another school, which is kind of cool because, you know, skills that our team might be lacking, the other team might be better at and vice versa, so we can kind of piggyback off each other. So this year, this is the playing field and the rapid relay game is... There's also an autonomous driving skills, but there is specific coding that goes along with that. But the teams participate with each other, they can pass the ball to each other and the goal is to score points in these squares on the scoreboard. I'm pretty sure the next... No, I didn't. I thought I put a video on it. So the kids so far have worked really hard to build their robots. Last week, we came across some errors in some of the building and we had a hard practice, but I feel like it's part of the learning process. I told the kids, if we don't make mistakes now, then, you know, what happens if this happens right before the competition? So it's a good learning experience. But we did, we were able to put together a robot that moves. It doesn't do everything that it's supposed to do for our rapid relay competition, but some of the kids can show you what it does. And then you are welcome to ask them questions and they can tell you a little bit about their engineering notebooks and just what the process has been. But I will introduce some of them. Come on up, Lincoln. Come on up, Liam. Come on up, Addie. Don't be shy. Doran, Mason, and Elliot. You guys have any questions for them or for me? Or you just want to see their robot move? All right, go ahead. Get it out. And then just make sure you hit it to the right square. Check mark. Right there. So do you want to tell them what it's going to do?
So the arm that we're trying to work on, like will come down at some point, like this thing like moves in circles and like takes up the ball onto the arm and then like we can like let go of this and down here and like bring it up and the ball will fly into the hole.
So where do you get all the parts that you use to build your current robot? And does the robot have a name?
Um, did we do the robot? We did do a robot, yeah. But the pieces came from like a kit that we got. Yeah, it was like 127 something in the building.
And now you still have to add to it to finish it to get it?
Yeah, so like we finished the build and then we saw Eric and Liam like taking a photo and tried to build the robot.
And is it just one of those? Am I asking too many?
No, go ahead.
Is it just one robot or will there be two eventually?
Well, there will be two eventually.
So the other team, Carter, like adding the kids and Trayvon, they're the only ones that they like had, they found something out like in the future.
Lincoln, that's a job for you.
So I guess they're like, they figured out something that would have to like be fit to the robot to make it take the corners and make it conceal it. They should like put it back together in a little time, so.
So eventually both robots will be exactly alike?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yes. So with VEX IQ, you can build your own robot with the pieces. It just has specific dimensions that you have to follow. But since these kids have never been exposed to VEX IQ before, we chose to build a robot that already had directions. So they both chose the same one out of the options they were given, but they will both be the same.
Awesome.
Yep.
When is your deadline for competing?
So we have two competitions that were registered for February 8th and February 15th. So we have a little while to get ready. But, yeah.
You guys are the trailblazers for... I was wondering about the results once you guys go and how you do.
Yeah.
But also when we finish with the robots, we have to build like the floor so we can start practicing.
Oh, wow. Oh, you want to build the arena thing too?
Yeah. Well, we already, they already did that, actually. We built the floor and, but then they have to learn how to move all the mechanisms and then learn how to pass it to each other so that they could pass it to like another team when we actually go to the competition. And so that, a lot of practice driving. It's not like a normal remote control car that just goes like forwards and backwards. So it's a little trickier than that, so they have to practice.
Wow.
How fast would it go?
A mile per hour.
I don't know. That's about as fast right there.
Very impressive. Very impressive. You guys have a lot of work to do and I look forward to hearing how you do. Great job.
Thank you. I think this group named theirs Potato. Yes. I don't know about this group if they've named it yet.
I'm guessing Mrs. Bond would love some photos. If you wouldn't mind heading over to the seal.
Put the robot in it.
Oh, yeah.
Got to have the robot in there.
Robot needs to be in the photos.
Yeah. And the other thing, their digital notebooks. This was, like, we could either do it on paper or digitally and they've done a really, really great job. It's kind of like Google Slides in a way. And so every practice we have, they update their digital notebook with a picture of what they've done, any progress that they've done. And that's also judged when we go to the competition, so it's part of their points. So it's really cool that they've like kept on that and updating. It's kind of like a journal to go along with their journey throughout their process of building. So.
Could I have it?
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Gray and Dr. Parker over here for a quick pic. Yeah. We can run here. Run! Everybody, whole team. Can we put the robot in the middle?
Maybe Dr. Edwards.
What's that? Oh, Dr. Edwards. Yep, yes, yes. Thank you.
They said I was supposed to hold the remote for the picture.
He just wants to fly with it.
Yeah, he wants to drive it.
One of the middle guys, can you hold the robot for me?
Pick it up. Like you can...
All right, ready. One, two, three. All right, take a couple. One, two, three. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more question. Who designed your T-shirts?
Uh, it's Mrs. Jones, a second-grade teacher at our school.
They're very cool.
And actually, the middle school is piggybacking, so theirs is the same as ours too.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Mrs. Lockwood, who's going to provide a brief summary of our teacher evaluations from last year. These numbers drive the amounts that our teachers will be receiving in this week's paycheck with the tag dollars that we received last month.
All right. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Good to see you all tonight. As Chris shared, this is just a brief summary on our teacher evaluation summary and then how our tag money is being distributed. So as I shared last year, our evaluation formula is 100% based on the rubric. So I have the breakdowns here. There's four domains. Planning is 10%, effective instruction is 75%, leadership is 15%, and then the core professionalism, which is domain four, has special weighting. Kelly, last year, you asked me what that special weighting was and I didn't have the answer for you. So I added it on there this year, fully anticipating that question. So the special weighting for that domain, if they're effective, there's no change to their score. If there needs improvement, they're minus a tenth of a point. If they're ineffective, they're minus two tenths of a point. And if they're highly effective, they are added a tenth of a point. So that's the special weighting on that one. So those domains are marked through teacher, through observations or artifacts that teachers upload or meetings that they have with their evaluators. Last year, if you recall, we did have a rubric update for last school year. We updated all four of the domains. And as we went on through the year, we quickly realized that domain two, the effective instruction, there was just a lot of, kind of a lot of, it was a lot of hard work for both the teachers and the administrators to keep track of. So for this school year, just an FYI, we did update that entire domain two rubric. And so I've never been part of a committee where both the administrators and the teachers were so eager to get something done and have a change. Dr. Parker and I think Brooke can both nod in agreement that both sides were like, yes, this is amazing, this is a great change. And so far, I think that this first semester has been a good change and not nearly as much work on, honestly, both sides, the teachers and the administrators. It was a lot of work. So for this year, the same percentages, but the domain two was updated for this school year. And then as far as our tag money, for last year, we had 162 teachers fall in the highly effective category, 142 ineffective, and one as improvement necessary. And then based on those numbers, for, on the right side, for those 162, there are 145 that are getting paid with the tag grant money. 15 teachers left the district or retired. One moved to an admin position and one started late in the year and so isn't eligible for that tag money. Of the effective, 142 effective, 124 are being paid. 14 left the district or retired and then four started late in the year and so we're not eligible for that tag money. So that's the breakdown. Do you have any questions? All right. Yep, thanks.
That concludes the report, right, Dr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
All right, so next up is the consent agenda. And this evening's consent agenda, we have regular session minutes, personnel report, claims, construction change orders, construction claims, preschool renovation and expansion, monthly fund transfers, overnight field trip requests, donation and donation approvals. Do I have a motion on this evening's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Shannon. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Phil. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. All right. Next action items. First action item, 7.1, 2024 budget end-of-year items. Mr. Elkins?
Thank you. Two resolutions, number 22 and number 23. We bring these to you each December. Resolution 22 is just some internal cleanup where we're on the books, moving numbers around to make sure everything is zeroed out within the account lines. We do not report that to any agencies. That's just internal cleanup, but we never know what we might be asked for proof of, so I'll continue to bring it to the board for approval. And then the other item is approving encumbrances. That just means if we have issued a purchase order in December that will be paid in January, that actually does get reported on our Form 9 financial to Department of Ed, so I need the board's approval for that. So with that, I'd ask for you to consider and approve those two resolutions.
Do I have a motion on item 7.1, 2024 budget end-of-year items?
I move that we approve Resolution 2024-22 inter-fund transfers and Resolution 2024-23 encumbrances.
I have a motion by Kelly. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Shannon. Any comments or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. 7.2, approval of annual line of credit renewal. Mr. Elkins?
Yeah, so this is always a two-step process back, I think with this year, we did it in July. There's that lengthy list of annual repetitive, every year, same thing resolutions that we have to do. One of those is kind of a general approval to go out and seek a line of credit or permission to get an advance on our tax draw. Fortunately, we don't have to do that anymore, but just in case a really bad situation popped up, I always ask to get that approval so we could go to the bank for an advance. So Greenfield Bank has always been really good working with us on that and so we renew that every December. So this is kind of part two of follow-up that we'll go back to them and renew it for years. So with that, I would ask the board for approval of Resolution 2024-24, which is renewing our line of credit with GVC.
Do I have a motion on Resolution 2024-24?
So moved.
I have a motion by Phil. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Megan. Comments or discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Guess I still need that. Item 7.3, 2025-26 Chromebook purchase. Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, it's that time of year again when we're buying our next round of Chromebooks. We have outfitted all of the district except for the lower elementary. This purchase would be for grades two, three, and four. And as I shared in our weekly report, we're going to hang on to some touchscreen Chromebooks for another year for our youngest learners as it's more developmentally appropriate. And then we'll look to purchase the K1s next year. Once again, we're buying off the MHEC Dell contract, which is the best pricing. Just to be sure, even though Dell tells me they give us the best pricing, I shopped around and they do indeed give us the best pricing and we saved approximately $35,000 off of what we spent last year. So.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do I have a motion on the 2025-2026 Chromebook purchase?
I make a motion to move forward with the 25-26 Chromebook purchase.
I have a motion by Shannon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Kelly. Any comments or discussion?
I've never bought that many Chromebooks myself, but when I looked at that, I thought, that seems like a pretty good deal. I mean, I expected the number to be much bigger, so I thought, yeah.
Yeah, actually, when we started buying these, they were well over $300 apiece and now we're in the 240s, which I think is a great improvement.
So based on your comment and talking about the weekly report, so when we move forward, the next time with the K1 touchscreens, those are going to basically be, they're not going to travel with the kid after first grade. We're going to purchase the touchscreens that then will stay K1.
Yeah, so we're going to kind of shift the model and it's kind of going along with what I'm seeing a lot of other districts doing. K1 historically doesn't use their device a whole lot at home and largely, it's been going home to charge overnight so that they would have, if they were to need it in the classroom. So I met with the elementary principals and we kind of devised a plan to where we will go back to purchasing carts for those classrooms. Or when I say carts, I think we think these ginormous carts. They're not like that anymore, which is really nice. But then they won't go home unless, you know, we have a threat of inclement weather or there's a special project or something that, in my head. The reason being, touchscreens are a lot more expensive to repair and a little more expensive than a regular non-touch device.
All right, thank you. It was a motion by Shannon and a second by Kelly. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I had to think about that one a second, sorry. Item 7.4, first reading of Policy C350. Dr. Parker?
Yes, I'm bringing to you Policy 350, student, C350 student discipline. In consultation with our school attorney, we are recommending that we make a slight change to the appeal process and that's all I'm recommending changing. And I would like to bring this to you as a first reading only. This will not be a vote tonight. As we continue to talk, I would like to bring this likely next month for approval.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. Does anyone have any comments or discussion on the first reading?
I do. When I looked at this, there's a section in there that talks about performing community service that we authorize the superintendent to develop administrative guidelines to perform a program whereby a student performs community service. I'm not confident that we need that in there. I feel like, I think you said it's not in the administrative guidelines, right? So I feel like this might create confusion if it's in here but not in the administrative guidelines. And if we're looking at making sure everybody's doing things exactly the same, would this not cause confusion if one person was supposed to be expelled but then got community service and one person didn't?
Thank you. It's a really good question. Our current administrative guideline doesn't necessarily mention this. This gives us the ability to do that if we so chose to do so. I know Mrs. Tharp and I have had a few conversations about what we might want to look at differently for some diversion programs and things of that nature. And I could go either way on this, but I do see something of this nature being in our future. The last thing I would say is it doesn't require us to have it or not to have it. I do understand your communication point. That's a good point.
I feel like when it comes to principals, I don't think make decisions lightly to expel somebody. I think they, it's a pretty serious thing and I feel like we should support what they want and it should be as clear as possible so that there's no confusion and families aren't being confused by why one person gets expelled and by one person doesn't. So I don't know. We can talk about it further before we approve it, but that was just my thoughts.
So I know, talking about that, that we do have diversion programs also that are in lieu of suspension. that are in lieu of suspension. So we're not... It's not just... It's not just...
Whatever, is that what that is?
No, like, if somebody... We have vaping programs and... Or programs for students that are caught vaping or smoking where they can participate in a said program to reduce their consequences. I see Miss Tharp nodding her head out there. So I think in this, you're talking suspension and expulsion. So there are probably some good steps aside from just suspension and expulsion to discipline kids that maybe get them going. And we need to keep things on the table for people, but used consistently.
Right. I think that's our biggest concern is that... So before we have the second reading, we'll...
Do some adjusting, sounds like?
Any other comments or discussions on our first reading policy C-350? All right, then that brings us to item eight on our agenda, board member reports. Before we get specifically to board member reports, since we're nearing the conclusion of our meeting, I would like to take just a moment here and show our appreciation for Pastor Phil and his commitment the last four years here on the school board. It's truly been a privilege and an honor for me to serve alongside you. And we are so thankful for your time here on the board. And I will turn it over. Any other board members have any comments that they would like before we put Pastor Phil in the rocker?
Pastor Phil, I've really enjoyed working with you. You've been a great board member. You've been very comforting to all of us when we've been stressed out. And I've really appreciated working with you. And I'm sad to see you go. I know you're going to have lots of fun things to do. And I've appreciated working with you. Thanks for all you've done for us.
Thank you.
You've been an incredible mentor, I think, to all of us in a lot of different ways. And just because it's your last four days, you've been a big... Like, done. We're still saying, oh, that is a last four days. Still a rock.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for sharing Phil with us for the last four years. He has to share the rocket chair, too. Yeah.
Do I say something?
No.
Pastor Phil?
Yes.
May I, please?
Oh, yes.
I just want to share my appreciation as well. Pastor Phil, when you took the office and took the position on the board, I distinctly remember your purpose, and that is to be an encourager. And I want you to know that we felt that, that I personally felt that. And it's made a big difference, that support that the board provides. But your encouraging words and everything that you've done for us has been deeply appreciated.
Well, let me just say, it has been a wonderful four years. And, you know, I know we don't have the time. But in four years, you get to know people pretty well. I could go around this table and go to every person and say something positive about you because you all do a remarkable job. And the administration that we have here, the principals that we have in place, the vice principals, the teachers, the whole gamut of what goes on in this school system is incredible. And I'm just... I'm grateful to have had the blessing of being a part of you for these four years. Ran into some tough times physically, as did Greg. And together, we made it.[1541.53]